Good evening. Welcome to the to the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City of Bangor Planning Board Meeting. If you're here for Bad Men Anonymous or something, you're at the wrong meeting. We welcome you, the members of the public, applicants, board members, members of the staff. Appreciate all their work. I'll introduce the board members first. From the far right is Michael Bazinett and Vice Chair Ted Brush. And on my heart, Ken Hume. And to my immediate left, Jonathan Boucher, and then Tricia Hayes. City staff on the far left is Development Director Anne Krieg. Behind me on the left is Dave Sevcek, the city solicitor, and then Planning Analyst Anya Collette. And over behind me on the right is City Engineer John Terry. Sound and video is provided by Communications Coordinator Cody Vigu and his crew. We appreciate their help. The planning board has multiple roles. We review amendments to land development code, which typically include either changes to zoning districts or changes to the text within the code. Our review of these amendments includes adherence to the most recently amended Comprehensive Plan and is in the form of recommendation to the city council as to whether the item ought to pass or ought not to pass. The city council makes the final decision on zoning and land development code changes. Second, we serve as the regulatory authority for land development permits, commonly known as site plan review. The Land Development Code can be found on the city's website. Couple of housekeeping items. I would like to remind everyone to please silence their cell phones. When applicants or members of the audience are asked to speak, you should come up to the podium right up front here. Introduce yourselves. Let us know where you're from. Make sure that you speak up. Sometimes folks have trouble, trouble hearing others, and so it's appreciated if you can speak up on your talk. The microphone's green light should be on when you're speaking. If you are on Zoom, please use the raised hand function to let us know you would like to speak, and we will bring you into the meeting. We do broadcast to streaming services. Also, due to recent problems with individuals bringing hate speech and or comments into meetings such as this, we would ask that all comments be respectful and considerate of all others and their opinions. Any attempt at disrupting this meeting through the use of hate speech or otherwise disrespecting the views and opinions of others may result in the person being removed from the meeting. As a last resort, we will end this meeting if it cannot continue in an orderly or considerate manner. We will call the applicants in the order they appear on the agenda. That's not real too, too tough tonight because we only have one item on the agenda. When it is time for you to present your project, we ask the applicant to come or their representative to come up to the podium and present the application. Once you have made your presentation, the applicant should stay at the podium while we take comments from the staff and questions from board members. At that time, the applicant may be seated, and we will open up the floor, the public comments. If there are any comments from the public, we will ask the person speaking to indicate if they are for or against the project. That's important for us to know. Once public comments are completed, we will close that item to the public comments. The board will then deliberate on the proposal using the standards found in the Land Development Code and the state statute as applicable and act on the proposal. The board may approve or deny the project or may otherwise work with the applicant if there are compliance issues that could be addressed with modifications to the plan. The board may continue the application to a future meeting in order for the applicant to modify the plan or for any other reasonable cause. If you disagree with the decision of the board tonight, you may, you have the right to appeal the decision to the Superior Court of Maine. Once your project has been reviewed, feel free to leave the meeting. You do not have to stay. But if you prefer, you are welcome to stay and list other projects. We thank all applicants for taking the time to present their project for our review. This pro, this process is important for the city's development and direction of our future. Now, on the agenda tonight is a zone change. Zone changes, as I mentioned earlier, are a final decision by the city council. So after we make a recommendation tonight, it will then go to the city council for final decision. The item that is on the agenda tonight is to amend the land development code by changing a parcel of land located on Ohio Street at map lot R fourteen zero zero six C from urban residence one and rural residence and agricultural district to high-density residential district. Said area of land contains approximately nine point one one acres. The applicant slash owner is Harvey and Daniel Sprague. Would the applicant or their representative please come forward?
Yes, my name is Harvey Sprague, and I'm I don't know that parcel of land. And as stated in the summary here, that that property is currently has two zones in it. And we'd like to change the one. It makes it much more conducive to the housing, which is pretty scarce in the city of Bangor. If anything, it's serviceable, nice sewer wall. Basically, that, that's, that's it. There isn't a whole lot. Pretty clear cut.
Thank you. All set? Yep, but if you would stay up, I'll see what we've got for questions here first. Any board members or how about comments from the staff? Do we have any comments from the staff? Thank you. Board members, questions for the applicant? Concerns?
Okay, I think you're all set for it. I have a question. It's not for the applicant, but it was mentioned in the supporting documentation that this is in within the growth zone area. It was mentioned that this property was within the growth zone for Bangor, but I want to ask the city staff. They know if utilities are going out to it, if that's what they mean by growth zone.
Well, this is in, in the comprehensive plan. There's a, a growth boundary that with some exceptions does follow where water and sewers available. John, water and sewers.
Water is available. Sew, sewers. I mean, if they want to connect to the sea sewer, they have to do a little bit of work. It's a little ways down the Ohio Street, but not, you know, it's in the city project. But they might have to do some work on Ohio Street, but we will soon have.
Yeah, thanks, Adam.
Thank you. You're all set. You can say that now. Thank you. All right, so I'll open up the meeting to members of the public. A lot of folks here. Anyone want to stand up? Come forward. You're welcome to, and we would be happy to listen to you.
Good evening. Good evening. I just got back from vacation. I get a little cold, so bear with me.
If you would introduce yourself.
My name is Tom Russell. I'm a retired attorney who represented municipalities over my career on many matters, including zoning and land use. I am appearing here tonight as the trustee of the Thomas and Sonia Russell Living Trust, which owns unit thirty-one in Sable Ridge. That's located at fourteen thirty-four Ohio Street, and it abuts the property in question. I'm also a member of the Sable Ridge Homeowners Association, and I'm on its Board of Directors. I am opposed to this zone change request. State law governs municipality zoning authority. And I think as you alluded to earlier, section thirty-eight, forty-three, fifty-two, two requires that a zoning ordinance must be pursuant to and consistent with a comprehensive plan. The city of Bangor has adopted a new comprehensive plan in two thousand and twenty-two. It's my opinion that the application before you this evening does not satisfy the requirements of being consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm particularly looking at the portion of the comprehensive plan that deals with future land use plan and the future land use map. This area of Bangor is in the neighborhood residential portion of the future planning map. It's defined as medium-density residential. The purpose of the land use map and the comprehensive plan is to guide the policy surrounding land use, act as foundation for zoning, as a guide for future amendments to zoning, to support the development of land uses that are consistent with a comprehensive plan. As I said, the plan designates this area, of all of it, as neighborhood residential, which is defined as medium-density residential development. This proposed zoning is high-density residential. On the face of the title of the section alone, it's clearly inconsistent with the requirement that this area be developed for medium-density residential. In addition, if you review the permitted and conditional uses allowed in the HDR zone, that clearly shows that this is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan calling for medium density. In section one sixty-five, one hundred C, one permitted use is one or more buildings containing seven to twelve dwelling units. If a parcel is minimum by two acres, this is eleven acres. As I review the ordinance, though, I'm a little bit, I was unable to sort out some of the language. I'm not clear whether this dwelling unit cap is on the total number of dwelling units or if it applies to each building with no limit on the number of buildings that you can have. The, what confuses me is the land development matrix, which is one sixty-five attachment three to the ordinance, seems to imply that there is no limit on the number of buildings or the total number of dwelling units. As under the dwelling unit per acre column, it says not applicable. I think it gets more tenuous for saying this is consistent with the comprehensive plan if you look at the allowable condition, conditional uses in the zone. Section one sixty-five, one hundred D deals with conditional uses. The first one is one or more buildings containing thirteen to thirty dwelling units on a minimum parcel of three acres. Again, we have eleven acres, so this would apply. This section has the same issue that I found with the following one. I don't know whether you can have more than one building with thirteen to thirty units in it because of, again, the land development code matrix says there's no requirement. It's not applicable for the dwelling unit per acre. So we, I don't really know. We at least know we can have thirteen to thirty units. Maybe it could be more than that if you can have more buildings. The second use that I found at odds with a comprehensive plan is mobile home parks. That, that is with a minimum of twenty-five mobile home spaces and a minimum land area of five acres. Again, we have eleven acres. There is a density limit on mobile homes. That's six homes per acre. This is eleven acres. Times six, that could be a sixty-six unit mobile home park. Again, that is not medium density. Congregate housing, minimum of two acres. No building can contain more than a hundred dwelling units. There's no limit on the number of buildings. There is a density limit. You can't have more than twenty-five mobile home units per acre. Twenty-five by eleven is two hundred and seventy-five dwelling units. All of these uses are permitted if you change the zoning to HDR. Given those permitted and conditional uses, especially for an eleven-acre parcel, there is no way that the HDR zone can be construed as a medium-density residential development zone. Now, the staff memo indicates, and it is shown on the map, that there is one property off of Ohio Street, north, northwestly side of it, if it is, that does have HDR zoning. That is true. But that zoning designation applies to portions of Cape Park that are located northeastern of Ohio Street and were developed by the United States as housing associated with Dow Air Force Base probably in the nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties. Even if the city had a zoning ordinance at that time, the federal government is not subject to local zoning. So the city really had no review or approval of that development. I suspect that this HDR designation in this area was based on the reality that it's already developed as high-density property. I think that the fact that that HDR zone is there should not be used as justification for this zone change under the twenty-twenty-two Comprehensive Plan, especially the future land use plan for undeveloped property. This Comprehensive Plan is only one year old. The planning board should not recommend approval for a zone change that is totally inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. In essence, this is a zone change that would create an island of HDR zoning and a sea of RRNA, LDR, and URD-one zoning on a southwesterly side of Ohio Street. That sounds like spot zoning to me. If this change is approved, it will undermine the integrity of the Comprehensive Plan that's only one year old. Now, one owner, landowner is granted HDR in this area that's designated for neighborhood residential. Others will certainly follow. And once you've set a precedent, it's hard to take it back. So I urge you to not recommend this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Any questions? Questions for Mr. Russell?
Oh, thank you.
Unit sixteen in Sable Ridge. And I don't know anything about the law. But I do have some questions.
The mic actually goes to people watching and not.
So just try and speak up a little bit if you would, so they can hear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it all right now?
Yeah.
That's all right?
Thank you. By the way, if I may interrupt you one more time, I just learned tonight that if, if there is someone here that is really struggling with hearing, they do have earphones in the video sound booth in the back that you can use to put on and hear a little bit better. So just be aware of that. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I have five concerns simply as a property owner. The old growth trees that are behind the all the condos, as I understand it, they're all going to be wiped out. Next one is high-density. What does it mean? And I know you can't answer that yet, but that's my question. Trailers, one-story buildings, two-story buildings, three-story buildings. Water pressure. Is there going to be any decline in water pressure? John would know that, I think. And what about the sewer? Who pays for that? And when, how does that fill in? And the last concern I have is my property value will go down, in my opinion. That's it. I'm against it. Thank you. That's, that's it.
Yeah, thank you. Let me see if I can answer some of those questions just to kind of help with concerns that you may all have here. So the allowed uses, I'm just going to read from what we have in front of us, which some of you probably or many of you don't have, but allowed, allowed uses high-density residential district, which is what we're talking about here. A single building containing one dwelling unit, one or more buildings containing two to six dwelling units, one or more buildings containing seven to twelve dwelling units provided parcels at least two acres, which, as pointed out earlier, that's true in this case. Home occupation or profession, community living arrangements, small daycare center, minor essential service facilities under the conditions of separate code, a tiny home park, accessory uses on the same lot and customary incidental to and support it to the above uses as listed under conditional uses below. And there are a number of conditional uses, which I'm not going to list them all out, but I, you know, I'm certain if we had more concerns, I could, I could give you more answers to that. And that all comes from the city code that we have presently. And, and I actually appreciate Mr. Russell earlier pointing out the Comprehensive Plan, because as I said earlier, that is what we use to guide us on this. To hit on the issue of sewer line, John, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding typically is that in a situation like this, the developer would pay for any extension to the sewer line to their property. There was another question. Water pressure. Our goal is never to reduce water pressure. Can I say that confidently? And I think that is always our, our, our goal in engineering in the water department. And they have minimum requirements for pipe size and, you know, a whole bunch of plumbing things that I don't want to talk about tonight to make sure that the water pressure is not reduced to folks around this property. Thank you.
I also raised the issue of trees.
Great. Yes, you did raise an issue of trees. But you were talking about what is the intent of the developer, and I can't speak to what the intent of the developer is.
I can't either. I just wanted to ask a question. Though somebody has asked it.
Right. Okay, why don't you come back up again so we can catch you on the microphone and just get that question? Yep, you, please. And then we'll listen to this next woman. And maybe you could just get that question defined a little bit better for me on the trees. And then, sure, if we need the landowner to answer, we can, but carry on. Question about the trees.
I'm happy to speak to the tree issue when I get up and speak.
Okay, would you, would you rather she does that? Sure. Okay, all right, that's fine. Before you do, and we won't forget that.
Right.
She, she was next, so I'll let her come up first.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Thank you.
So my name is Marcia Toll. I live at fourteen thirty-four Ohio Street on unit five. And basically, my, I have a lot of questions just on the fact that I don't know anything about coding and how it all works. It's just that, basically, I didn't understand what the point of changing it was if there isn't a plan on the table. If there's a plan by the owner, then I need to know what that plan is before I can really say yes or no. Because my thought was if he's planning on putting an apartment building, I would like to know that before I say yes, go ahead and change it or no. And if he wants to build an apartment building, why are we as neighbors required to change and accommodate their needs? If you want to build an apartment building, go buy land that is already coded for that. My dad is on the board in his town, and that's what he said. He's like, I'm coded for agriculture. I cannot build an apartment building. If I wanted to build an apartment building, I would go buy land where there's apartment building coding. So therefore, I'm just simply against it at this point in time unless you tell me what your plan is. I'm not going to say, yeah, go ahead if you aren't telling me your plan. Be coding ahead of time, and then you're going to, all of a sudden, now after you get that approval, then you're going to come forward with a plan? No. I want to know what the plan is now. And that's unfortunately what I was expecting when I came to the meeting tonight was that it was going to be addressed, and I was going to hear all about it. And instead, I've got, well, we want to change it. Well, that makes more questions instead of less. So I was very disappointed by the original proposal and answered no questions for me whatsoever. So at this point in time, I still have to say no until you give me more details.
Thank you. Well said. I, I get your confusion. You have to kind of think of it from the position of the developer and, and Mr. Sprague, right, is welcome to give as much information as he wants to or not to answer your questions, but as you can imagine, if the zoning that is currently there does not satisfy what he would like to do with the property, then from the city's perspective, what we ask is that he changed the zoning first, which allows him to do whatever it is in the future that he is desiring to do. We often remind ourselves here on the board that no matter what all that happens, in the end, we have seen many times where an applicant changes zoning, and then they simply sell the property, and somebody else comes along with a different plan and does something entirely different anyway. So the process is built for zone change to happen first, and then for if he were to do, say, a subdivision, then he would come in for a subdivision plan after the zone change.
Well, unfortunately, the same could be said if he builds the apartment building and then he sells to a slumlord. Then my property value goes down because of basically what happened here tonight. My property doesn't change in value if you don't make any changes here. So everything could really depend on your decision here. And so therefore, I don't think that's fair either. It's just a matter of, okay, now I'm going to have a slumlord next door, and nobody's going to take care of their apartment building. There's no guarantee even if he builds the apartment. So do I really want to change the zoning? No, unfortunately, I would be a guest up.
Appreciate. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Adams, and I live at fourteen thirty-four, number eight. You're still being asked to make a decision in a vacuum. You're still being asked to make a decision without knowing very much information. And I'm sorry, with all due respect to Mr. Sprague, but I don't feel that was very forthcoming when there's this number of people here wondering about what his plan is. He said that he wants to change it from two zones to one zone. But those two zones, neither of those are high-density. High-density, as Mr. Russell mentioned, is across the street from Cape Park in, and it's a very small island area. So too many unknowns, I think, for you to be able to recommend this for city council to pass. The other thing is that the location where the proposed driveway is, I'm sure that you've all seen the map where there's that very skinny driveway, sort of dogleg situation. It looks to me, and I know I'm just eyeballing it, no, I wasn't out there with a measuring tape, but it looks to me like he's going to need a variance. And or someone's going to need to sell him some land from the two abutting houses that are there because there's just not enough room. That's another reason to say that it's premature to make this decision. As to the old growth trees that Tom was talking about, there is a huge row of old roti trees that tower above the condos that are two stories high. The trees tower above that. Oh, yes, we've got some beautiful photos here. We'll hand these around if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
That's one of the other condo owners for everybody to see the trees. It's difficult to know how tall they are, but like I said, it's probably a three-star story building height. I did a little cursory research on the internet, as we do, right, to figure out, do the roots go out and stop the five-foot setback? You can imagine the answer is no, they don't. How can we estimate how far the roots go out of those old growth trees? We estimate it based upon the canopy. Now, no, I'm not a biologist. Actually, I'm a lawyer by trade. But on the internet, it says you can take the size of the canopy, and you can see the size of the canopy in the photograph. That's probably anywhere from five to ten feet. And what you do is you multiply that by three, and that's if it's the wet seasons. Right now is the wet season. So you take three times five, at a minimum would be fifteen. But if it was dry season, it's five, it's five that you multiply it by. That's twenty-five. What I would have liked to have heard from Mr. Sprague is his openness to talking with us about what his plan is, as other people have mentioned, but also whether or not he would allow us a conservation easement. Uh, as other people have mentioned, but also whether or not he would allow us a conservation easement. To allow us to keep our trees and keep them alive, keep them healthy, um, and uh they're very important, as we all know. Um, so. Lastly. I think that I would uh say that he purchased the property subject to it being low density or medium density. Uh, whatever those two zones are, but neither of those zones is high density. Uh, he should not um be allowed to uh then come in and ask to upgrade his property with a bit of a windfall, making it high density. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, uh, if he changes the zone and then sells the property, that's his right. Um, and then we have no idea what's going to happen in terms of our community, in terms of the community that you represent. We would ask you to not recommend this uh proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Victoria Holman, and I live at fourteen forty-eight Ohio Street. I'm trying to give you an overall picture of what we call the neighborhood in that area. I tend to think of it as going from where the Fenton Road comes onto Ohio Street to where. The Davis Road crosses Ohio Street. This is our neighborhood. I moved out there almost thirty years ago. I know before that, that land used to be farmland. And there used to be pastures, leveled land with fields, not all the trees that have since grown up out there. Um. And um, some of those are there, but development has taken place. When I moved out there, my land was part of all this land. The house I bought was part of all this land. It's probably at this point in time. It's not the oldest one of the oldest in that neighborhood. It was built in eighteen fifty-seven. And I purchased it and I've been rehabbing it ever since. It has, it was originally um being sold. As my house and ten acres of land, but I was very young and didn't feel I could afford it. And didn't know what might happen in the future, so I bought my house with one acre of land. And I was happy as a clam and still am because I feel like I'm living in the country, but I'm living with the amenities of the city. But after that happened, um, several people purchased that. Remaining nine acres of land and a couple of different projects never got off ground. You heard about them, but they didn't happen. Then someone proposed a trailer park and I collected a boatload of signatures for that, and that was defeated. I tried to make clear to the city that we're talking fallow ground here. And there's quite a lot that left in the city, and I think the way you begin with developing this God-given land. Right from the get-go would be to produce some good neighborhoods in that area. And also, in the meantime, that area had developed something of a bad neighborhood name. One of the first things I found out was that back at the beginning of what I would call our neighborhood towards the Fenton Road. There was a twenty-five acre parcel of land there left to the city. And in his will, he said he'd like to have it developed as a park. And eventually it got developed as a park at the dog park, dog walking park. And it's a people walking park. We all use it. It's a very busy little park. And across from that is the house which was mantis that belonged to the church and that used to be on the corner of Fenton Road and Ohio Street. Then coming down, there was a house, another house, and then eventually another project was given, um, rented. And okay, and it's the um, a street that goes up and there is single family houses up there. But all of these developments that have since occurred all start way back from the Ohio Street roadway. You can't even see the beginning of those houses from Ohio Street, the road itself. Then there was a couple more houses and Sunny Hollow, which you show on the map here, goes up there. Same thing. You can't see the houses from Ohio Street. The street goes straight up with a couple of little cul-de-sacs up on one side with a little round of houses there. Then there are a couple more houses and. The roadway up into Sable Ridge. That too used to be part of the property of my houses, that remaining nine acres. But this original property that belonged to my house, I think, was around forty acres and went halfway down. Towards the Davis Road, but it got chopped up by people who bought it because when the old people died, their family did not want. The property, and so I think actually what happened was a banker bought it and divided it into these parcels for sale. And. I was a little nervous, but when I found out what they were putting up there in Sable Ridge. It is. Four-unit buildings that have what I've seen described in some of your dis- descriptions as townhouses. You can purchase them outright, you can own one, or you can rent them. They have a, an HOA, someone who is there and keeps an eye on how things are going. And people keep the yards clean and things of that nature. They are right next to me, but you can't see them from the street. And what you can see when I'm out in my garden is their mailboxes, and that's it. There are a lot of children up there. There are different people. There are single families that live up there. There are young professional couples who come and then go, and you can either rent or buy. I've seen a couple of children up there. There aren't many, and there aren't many that go down underneath the bus. There's a lot of dogs, a lot of dog walkers in that development. So my land is a good-sized piece of land that comes down underneath the road. That goes up there, and so was the neighbor on the other side of that, so we have a break there.
Ms. Holman, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you because you're fascinating. And I enjoy it where you're going, but you're giving us a lot of history. I kinda like that, have you get to your point?
Okay, well, the point is, so far approximately five developments have gone into that area. And each one of them has been. We'll call it U R D one. And they're single family homes. All five of them, not just in the past since I lived there and all the old farmland started getting flooded up. But even very latest project that was built within the last two years. Down at this end of the neighborhood, there is a church on the corner of Ohio Street and the Davis Road. To the left of that church, that a brand-new housing development has gone in there, and it's pretty crazy homes. And they are all single-family development homes. Across the street from that, they mentioned Cape Park. As high-density housing, but it's an anomaly. It was built by base for the. And the front streets of Cape Park on Ohio Street and when you turn on the Davis Road. All have single-family homes because that's where the offices were housed when it was part of Dallas Bay. And those single homes still remain. Across the street from me was a field going down. There is a little Christian school that's been built up there that's part of the church, which is down on that side. And that was completely fenced in, other side wasn't fenced. It's a very quiet place. They have their own parking. They don't stop up anything on the street. And Birchwood Street was built down in there. A couple of cul-de-sacs going off to the left, and that is. A single-family house. When you get to Cape Park, you have Blue Hill West that goes down. Aside from all the single-family houses on Ohio Street, you have. On Blue Hill West going down towards Down East School, single-family housing on both sides of that street. And a couple of the front off-streets behind the Ohio Street houses are those four-unit. Buildings that can be purchased outright now as homes for people who maybe need to buy a home that costs a little less. And that is true right down to Garibou Drive, which is turns left and goes around the school. I had friends that lived down there in those single-family homes, lived their families. So out there we have a couple of schools and a couple, a couple of churches. Now this development going on right in the middle present of single-family and. What is considered like the Sable Ridge. The low-density housing. I find a request for a high-density housing and all the nightmares that it can contain. Way outlined of any development that is going on right up until this day. It does not conform to anything else being built in this area. And I think the city has worked very hard to make this a decent neighborhood from the foundation it was. And nice homes for people to live in and raise their children.
You told me earlier about the driveway. More on this that land. Make it so that it's more for the. Yeah, that I can go on in the building.
Yeah, right. Um. Like she said, on the right side of my house, ever since I lived there, there's been a drive. It's not a driveway. It was just a grass path that goes up into. Mr. Sprague's property, but it was his right-of-way that at some point in time he purchased. And it's not too far from my house on that side. And he, nah, he, someone approached me. A while back about selling off a piece of my property, and I said that will be directly under my windows. If you intend on making a street like goes in Sable Ridge, which bothers no one, right down past my house. To make um an accident and a knee rest onto Ohio Street. I um thought at one point that the neighbor next to me had sold us this for land for that to happen, but I found out tonight he didn't. Because he found out that would go right up under his windows. So I think it's like, I don't know, I was brought up with common sense, but it's like putting a carton of the horse to ask people to approve this zone change. When you don't even know what you're approving it for. I, I would never ask anybody a question like that. I think that is absurd practice. But it is what it is, and it also should be mentioned that traffic is an issue on Ohio Street. So the downside, that would be part of it because of the number of cars. That come up out of Cape Park, probably most of them. The housing units themselves are low-density or maybe medium-density. I think they're mostly low or single-family. They don't produce a lot of cars going out onto Ohio Street. Ohio Street goes clear out and at its end becomes Glenburn. There's also a couple of houses I've been told that are, when you're driving out of Ohio Street, you're going through Hudson. Main, two houses, and then the rest Bangor. And many cars from those outlying areas use Ohio Street as their way into Bangor City proper. There are streets that, not streets, roads that go off of Ohio Street, past Davis Road out in that area. And they go down into Union Street, and all the people that live on those, some of them come up to Ohio Street. And also a couple of roads that go over this way like towards, I don't know, it's Condesque or, uh-huh, um. They use Ohio Street to come into the city. The Davis Road, which is right around the corner, is also starting to be developed. And the only thing that was ever really down there was veterinary clinic. But that produced a lot of plant because there are music and traffic because they're a busy place. They have since built. Single families.
I'm gonna ask you again to get to the point.
Okay, well, my point is, it's inconsistent with everything that's been done out there to ask for this kind of. It seems like this is the bottom of the coding line. You're getting to this point and anything goes. And anybody and everybody can live out there, and you don't know what you're getting. So I don't think we can ask for Mr. Sprague's project can ask for this type of developing. Development, not only because we don't know even what it is, we don't know how he's gonna get in and out of it. And that affects a lot of us. His roadway, if it went from Ohio Street, would be going right past the backyards of people up in. Just right past my windows and past the backyards and the decks of people who live in Sable Ridge. So it's in contrast with everything else that has gone on before.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with all due respect to Solman and everyone else here, we try and keep it fairly brief and to the point and explain your position. Okay, is that, carry on.
Good morning, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Dan Nguyen. I owned a lot, uh, fourteen zero zero six B. Which is uh a little house in front of this uh planned development. So I'm probably the one that can be uh most impact, um, if this go through. Um, I can give, kinda give away a little here, a little preview of what can happen, but there's a lot of. Question and not answer, uh, very about what, kinda about, now go into that place. I don't know, is it gonna be the same developer of last year or the year before, but approximately uh around twenty twenty-one, August twenty-one. Uh, developer, uh, Nat Farm approached me and wanted, he showed me a plan to put in um. A ten-to-twelve unit condo, just like Sable Ridge into that place, and it was a pretty comprehensive plan. And you probably get a submission from Kaiser and Kaiser uh about that time. And the concern was, uh, first of all, the, the driveway is not wide enough for uh two lane, which is required for the. Uh, the condo, and this is a high-density, so it would be more than, I don't know if it's gonna be apartment or not. But it wasn't um wide enough, and I don't know, is that why it got thrown out?
I mean, right now that, looking at, and I don't have a survey map in front of me. I don't have a survey plan. All we have is. The aerial, you know, the tax map aerial.
Yeah.
And it looks like that strip that accesses the property is thirty feet wide.
Yeah.
So that's not super wide, but you know, if you're gonna put in. I mean, the driveway for Sable Ridge is, I went out there and measured it today. It's twenty-two and a half feet wide.
Yeah.
So that is, that is thirty feet wide. So if they were putting in a similar width driveway for. Uh, you know, I mean, the, the use of the driveway is based on what they plan on doing with the property as well, how much traffic it's gonna see. And I know we haven't, you know, we don't know anymore about it than, than you guys, because we're just at the zone change part of this. I don't remember what Jim Kaiser worked on or proposed, um.
They were, they, they wanted an extra twenty, additional twenty feet into my property. To make it enough for trainings of the road to meet the, the city code.
Yeah, but I don't remember it. They were proposing a road.
Okay.
And they were gonna make it a private road, and then you would need fifty feet of width to make it a, to make it a private road. If this is just a driveway accessing a development and not a private road or a road to be taken over by the city, then that's, that's different.
Okay.
But I guess just for, just to, you know, for. To uh kind of like a, a general scheme to look at here is, you know, it's thirty feet wide, at least the way we're measuring it. And a typical road or driveway is anywhere from, uh, two ways, anywhere from twenty to twenty-four feet to twenty-eight feet. However, whatever the use is, poor, you know, you're generating a lot more traffic. You might need a turn lane at the end of the driveway where you would need additional width. If you're not generating a lot of driveway, you could just have a single lane coming in and out. And, and that, that may work.
Yeah.
Nothing's been engineered, nothing's been, you know, I mean, I don't know where.
Sure, you didn't, you didn't get any kind of submission for this.
Right now, so, I mean, that would come later on.
Yeah.
So. And that might be, you know, that might be something that controls what the applicant can actually do with the law.
Yeah.
You know, the width of that driveway.
But that, that plan from twenty twenty-one didn't go through, but of course you still see it's not, there's no condo on it right now. Because due to that, one of that reason right there, the second one is when he asked to. when he asked to expand over my land, my leach field is right there and that would have destroyed my leach field. And the uh, the developer did offer to now pay for um, connecting my house to the city um, to a system, but that would have torn up the whole front yard and everything. Um, the road would be about twenty feet from my bedroom window with a lot of traffic going through also. Um, the, but I'm, I'm all support for, you know, more housing in the city because we need that. Um, on the back of that, on the plan by Mr. Kaiser, Kaiser Engineering, is saying that up to nine point one acre, only a portion of that is uh, uh, you can build on it, the rest of it is wetland. So I don't know how you guys are gonna approve uh, high density zoning when, you know, only maybe fifty, sixty percent of that is billable land, so up to nine point one acre. And if you look on Sable Ridge also is on the back of that, you, you got not expanding anything on there. So I, I don't understand now why is there high density zoning when there's a limitation of how much acre you can put on there with the wetland situation on there. And that, that was two years ago and I thought it's gonna go through and like you say, they maybe will do engineer uh, sewer or the roadway. One of the options that um, the developer brought up to me, they was kind of tried to connect to Sable Ridge roadway or sewer system. But I get that also fell through. And if you I just looked at the, on the Bangor daily deal, the, the, the developer name was just pop up. Um, for a very bad thing, uh, for, oh no, because he destroyed some wetland and he got fined for that. So I'm hoping that it's not the same gentleman that was trying to purchase the land and, you know, try to build building on it. Because look what he did there, so. And so right now, I'm, I'm again, now going with a high density zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, hold on. If, if you're going to speak, you have to get off to the podium. If, if Ms. Coleman, if you're going to come back to the podium, you will promise me you are sure.
You'd have to boil the exceed, but this development and code change isn't being proposed for abiding either end of the existing neighborhood of this section of Ohio Street. This high density um, development is being thrown down right in the middle of um, the urban development, the one family house and the um, on the Sable Ridge development. And others of that nature. And that should be noted, it's during the moment.
Thank you.
So um, I think one point of clarification.
Please.
Um, if they want to do a development, they would have to come back to the planning board with site plans and then we would also have to notify neighbors again. So this doesn't mean they can just do anything without any more site plans. They would have to go through a whole nother approval process. I just wanna make that clarification.
Mr. Nguyen.
The, the prior plan for, for though condo was for low density zoning. So this is even, you, you're gonna approve for high density zoning, which it you can put even more happening. And if, if the planning for lowly, low density zoning didn't work out, how do you guys propose that high density zoning gonna work?
Right. I'm gonna stop at that. Well, I appreciate what you're saying, but this is not the same project as what you saw proposed before.
Okay.
So we have to consider each project on its own merits. Um, and as, as has been mentioned here this evening so far, we're only at the zoning phase of this. So we're considering, we haven't approved anything yet. We're considering a zone change to allow high density residential on this property. Once that happens, as uh, planning analyst Phil had just mentioned, there is then a second step when a proposal, depending upon what it is, comes back to us with specifics and details, such as what you're talking about. And that's when all those things get worked out, but it's a different project. So we can't weigh a, a project that happened to be or was considered before, that's an entirely different project than this.
Okay.
Thank you. I would also mention, just before anyone else comes up, because it's sort of bubbled up a little bit here. Um, you mentioned it with your leach fields. Um, I think you mentioned it with some trees and things like that. There are some details such as that, which are entirely open to the developer uh, privately communicating with individuals with regard to abiding property. If there is something that all parties want to agree upon, that is outside of this process. And so just be aware, sometimes things like what you referenced and, you know, other stuff that may have been referenced here, is not really in the purview of, of what we're talking about tonight.
Except uh, in order to get the developer to negotiate with us, we, i- if they have the high density uh, zone approval, there's no reason to negotiate with us about the treatment.
If you're gonna speak, you have.
I'm just being honest. Uh, everybody knows that uh, when it comes to negotiating, that if he does get the high density approval, um, there's no reason to talk with us.
We understand that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all I'm saying.
Good evening. My name is Jim Munch. I live at uh, Sable, Sable Ridge. Never known why, I've never seen a sable there, but I live at the Sable Ridge condominium, I'm in unit thirty two. And uh, I'm next to Mr. Russell and uh, to him an attorney. What we're here to talk about, as I'm sure the board is keenly aware, is to change in the zoning. And the position that I think is critical here is this change in the zoning runs contrary to a comprehensive plan that was after great effort, much thought, much use of consultants and other folks and other input developed. And a high density, inserting a high density development such as this opens up the sort of Pandora's box that a comprehensive plan seeks to avoid. It's not that this gentleman can't do something with his land. He can. He can do it in conformance with the zoning that exists. He's asking to do more. And the more runs counter to, as I understand it, what the comprehensive plan is about. And it certainly doesn't make sense when you look at the situation on the ground, given the narrowness, I understand with, you know, that our driveway is twenty two feet. Yeah, there's drainage on the side and it's a much bigger event than twenty two feet of macadam. It is a wider zone than that. A high density, Mr. Russell went through some of the uh, the numbers in terms of what a high density development could be permitted. And I'm well aware, obviously, that any development would have to meet further hurdles in terms of conforming with the plan. But at least in terms of the options that are open, it would be enormous. And a twenty two foot driveway ain't gonna do it if you have anything like the density, a trailer park or otherwise, that Mr. Russell mentioned to you. So I think those are critical things. That's why we have a comprehensive plan. That's why that area is zoned as it is. So asking to change that is a fundamental shift in what's going on out there. And I think that really runs counter to the, you know, that's why we have a number of people here. I know I look at that and think that's gonna have an enormous close in impact in a very confined area. And this isn't a big open piece of land where, you know, you can space things out. It's going to be a confined area with limited access. So I think that's a critical issue. The other thing is, I don't see how this isn't spot zoning. And I think that raises a host of issues. There's a reason we are concerned by the concept of spot zoning, and that's what this is. We have a plan, we have zoning, we have reasons not to do it, we have a restricted piece of real estate, we have somebody who can develop the property in an effective fashion. I mean, he can do things, he can make money from his land. We're just saying that in conformance with what this city has decided we want out there, we want to restrict that to the boundaries that it currently has. The other issue is, and with all respect to some others, we haven't defined, he could tell us today what his plan is. And we can sit back and say, that sounds marvelous. And, and sir, he may have a marvelous plan. He may tell me the plan, I may think it's great. And then next month, life changes, he sells it to somebody else. And it's a whole different world with a different zoning structure. So what we're saying is, we haven't had any presentation as to why we should change the zoning structure. That is, as I understand it, in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And uh, so what we're looking at is a request for variance, essentially for profit in a very isolated situation that runs counter to what we're trying to create as a community, which is why we have comprehensive plans. If we don't want to have comprehensive plans, then we can perhaps some later date get rid of them, but we got one. So that's the issue is that a, a high density development, a lot of people, major shifts in that area will certainly for Sable Ridge community be extraordinarily intrusive, both during construction and permanently thereafter. I think the access issue beggars the imagination. I've seen, I drive by it every day. It's not big, you know, you suddenly put another significant body of, of vehicles going in and out of there. It would be a huge difficult change. You've got another street almost directly across, you know, the school down the road. You know, there's these real issues there, the traffic volume, particularly, now, I'm lucky, I'm not adjacent to that thoroughfare where it would be, but anybody living there is gonna have their quality of life significantly affected. Cause you can't move that back. There's no space. You can't have, you know, a nice buffer zone of trees, be they old growth or otherwise, because the line has to run so close to the condominium units close to that end. So I don't know why we change something that's in place for good reason. I don't know why we change something that fits with the comprehensive plan and in isolation, right in the middle of an area. Uh, so I very much urge the board to reject this zoning modification and leave the applicant to do all sorts of creative things with his land, but not in a high density district. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Anybody else? Yeah, I'm gonna, we're, we're going on almost an hour now, so I'm gonna encourage everyone to be brief and get to the point. Thank you.
My name is Gisela Murray, fourteen thirty four, higher number thirteen, lucky number so far. Um, I moved to Sable Ridge seventeen years ago, was brand new. Uh, I lived in the city in Bangor almost thirty years. And when I moved to Sable Ridge, I thought I was in heaven. Those trees, they are part of Maine and they're cutting down and down and down. I know Mr. Sprague owns the property, he can do what he wants. For us, it's a piece of Maine gonna be cut down, wildlife. I hear owls at night. I've seen porcupines, deer and turkeys. This is an emotional thing for me. And I understand that he wants to sell the property. If there would be another way to save that piece of Maine, it would be wonderful.
Thank you.
I'm Charles Martin, I'm owner at Sable Ridge. And I'll be brief. I just go on record as being opposed to any changes. There's been a lot of valid points already brought up, which I won't take up that. Any more time?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Don't feel like you have to, but come on up.
Hi, my name's Pearl Grandmont and I live at Sable Ridge in number twenty six and I am against this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosa Caristi and I live in Sable Ridge in unit thirty, next to Tom. Uh, retired here illegal. There's no sense in me reiterating what our attorneys have said here today. Um, so I'm gonna speak briefly from the heart. I am a military widow and when I moved into Sable Ridge, I'm in the back and I have never felt so safe in all my life. And being a high density is going to take away our safety. And that's not legalities, but that's important. Thank you. I am opposed, obviously.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Kizer. I live at Sable Ridge in number forty one. And everyone has already said everything that really everything needs to be said tonight. And just so that you know, that, that some of us that couldn't be here tonight, I'm speaking for them also. Um, we're not the only ones that are opposed to this. And so my no is for me and about a half a dozen others that I've talked to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, come on back up.
I just want, I know a lot of people said they'd like to see a plan before we vote on this. That's a trap for the unwary. That's an aspirational document. It's not legally binding. They could get a zone change and go out tomorrow and apply for something totally different. So I think what you have to do when you're considering these zone changes, you have to look at all the permissible and conditional uses that are allowed in that proposed district. And determine whether they're consistent with the current plan, which I say they are not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackson and I'm speaking on behalf of my family who lives um, on a parcel of land adjacent to the property. And I'm speaking in opposition of this proposed uh, zone change. Um, I believe that it would ha- have negative impacts on our community, um, as well as the environmental destruction of putting in high density housing as opposed to um, medium or low density residential. Thank you.
Address?
Fourteen seventy four, Ohio Street.
Excellent. Thank you, Jackson. Appreciate it. See nobody else? No raised hands on Zoom? That's good. I was nervous about Zoom this evening. I, I just wanna say I really appreciate all your comments before I close the uh, the public comment period. I know it's tough to get up in front of a bunch of us folks, uh, staring at you or whatever and I'm emotional and I know this is something all very strongly concerned about. So I appreciate your comments. So I close the public portion of meeting. Um, board members, this is our opportunity to deliberate, um, uh, discuss. And Director Creed has a comment?
Um, just start out, just by making a few comments for the board's um, certification. As has been said a couple of times tonight, I think one of the biggest frustrations um, often for um, the public and the board members is when you're doing a zone change, you're not sure what's gonna happen. Um, but it's correct to say that you have to look at the potential build out um, of the property under, you know, comparing it from what could be done there now to what could be done if the zoning change were to go forward. Um, but in the back of your mind, and, and you've looked at many site plans, um, so that you already know this, there are other parameters that will affect that development. Um, you know, the access road width will drive, how many units can actually go into um, that parcel, um, setbacks, you know, there'll be buffering requirements. So there are other parameters that will control how much development can go there. Um, so I just wanted to remind you on that. In terms of the comprehensive plan, you know, the last couple of years before the comp plan was done, we were in a limbo period of, of working on a comprehensive plan, looking at zoning changes and, and they're not, and they're not meshing. And now we're in a situation where we have a comprehensive plan, but we have not implemented the land use plan yet. It's a project we're gonna be starting as soon as we can, um, but it has not begun yet. So the exact definition um, of median density has not been established. That's gonna be established as part of our implementation of the comprehensive plan, of the, of land use plan extremely. So, um, you know, medium density, that use of that term means something very different than what's in the existing zoning right now. Medium density was used, we used that term as sort of the next level up from the level of density that's allowed in your downtown neighborhoods. So it's sort of the, sort of the high density that's closer to downtown and then going into sort of a medium density as you're leaving the downtown area. So what exactly that's going to look like, I'm not sure yet because we haven't gone through that process. Um, but I wouldn't be troubled by the term medium or high density um, from the comprehensive plan to what's in the zoning because that, that may end up looking very differently. And you know, overall, it's, you know, it's the burden of the applicant, you know, in their application to show that the, the changes, um, you know, is worthy of the recommendation. It hurt a lot of concerns and, um, you know, I just asked the board to take a look at that build out and, and see really what is the potential, you know, um, build out for that property.
Thank you, Director Creed.
Hi, I'm Josh Socia. Um, I'm one on Ohio Street. I'm not as, not as close to this, um, not close to this, so I don't think it's a conflict for me. Um, I would, the, one of the things that I keep hearing here is the evilness of apartments. Um, and as I look through the tax records of this development next door, Sable Ridge, I noticed that there's a lot of non-resident owners there, which means that those are a lot of rental units anyway. Um, so it's not completely inconsistent. Um, and I just wanted to point that out and, um, I, I'm not sure, I guess my, my other question, maybe this isn't something you need to answer, why the applicant wouldn't have asked for a change to U R E one instead of, um, instead of high density residential?
Thank you, member Sasha. I, I didn't introduce Josh Sasha in the beginning because he, he came in just a couple of minutes late, but he's our alternate member, just so you're aware. Might be some confusion as to who this guy is up here, this speaker. I think he was, uh, trying to speak for himself at this point, um, but he is as, uh, the rest of you all were, um, he is encouraged to be a part of our discussion, but he does not vote tonight unless we need an alternate member to be a part of the voting, which we won't. So just so you're aware on that. Um, any other board members have comments, thoughts? No, Mar?
Yes, a question for staff. Um, I'm assuming that the photographs that were passed out to us are of the condominium that's been referred to Sable Ridge?
Yes, yeah, adjacent.
And, and what's, what's the, what's the zoning district that that is located?
Low density residential is next door.
But tho- those aren't single family homes?
Correct. Low density residential allows for attached residential.
Okay, very good, very good. Um, on the implementation of the comprehensive plan and the establishment of the zoning districts and what the allowed uses are and how they're defined, any sense of timing and that occurring, or is that just, uh, not an answerable question at this point?
Yeah, um, we were hoping to get it started this fall, but I, I see it as a winter project. And to work on that information.
But a- as, as you would explain, um, you know, as that gets reviewed, uh, the potential certainly is there for the existing zoning in this area that we have under review tonight will be changed.
Absolutely.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other board members? But I think that always exists too, that potential for change always exists.
Sure, yeah.
It just, yes, yes.
It's important to know. It's not necessarily, uh, static because we have a new comprehensive plan and there's.
Yeah, I just went to bed and my friend's comments may not change. It may not change. And in which case this, uh, list of things allowed uses could happen.
So just to encourage a little discussion here, uh, unless you all have your minds made up, uh, I'm, I'm very interested if anyone has any more thoughts on this because, uh, you know, I'm really on the fence on this one, as maybe some of you are, um. The, uh, just, uh, comment, another thought on the comprehensive plan, um, the comprehensive plan states one of its goals is to encourage code changes to allow for more housing, because we have a great concern for lack of housing in the city of Bangor. That's one of our main goals. So that is part of what puts me on the fence on this one, is I understand Mr. Sprague's, uh, intent here, um, to create more housing, uh, the city needs more housing. On the other side of that coin, I also am troubled by the medium density, uh, term. Uh, we don't really have a medium density zone, so it's a term rather than a zone and makes it difficult for us to pin down, um. But the comprehensive plan does call this area to be medium density. Um, I am one who, uh, board members know I uh, hate spot zoning, tend to lean on the issue of spot zoning being a problem often rather than the little. Um, so I can see some of those concerns there. Um, there's also a note in the comprehensive plan, um, that mentions this, um, area or this property, uh, being complimentary to surrounding residential areas. And, um, I do tend to agree with those that seem to think that um, the high density that is over on the other side of the street was sort of forced upon us because of the military housing situation and is not, um, not really necessarily a, a choice the city made, you know, of its own volition, nor should it apply to other areas in, in the area. Um, so, you know, I, I, I hear what everyone's saying. I am really on the fence on this, um, and, um, very much interested if any other board members have any further comments?
Another, another question for staff, if, if you could help me with this, and it's from a staff memo. And what you, Chairman, just referred to as, as being complimentary to the surrounding residential uses, is that complimentary qualification limited, referring to the limited commercial and institutional uses? Only, or does it include the medium density residential development also being complimentary to surrounding residential uses?
Right.
Yeah, I would interpret that sentence structure that it's limited commercial and institutional uses that are.
Yes, that, that, that was the way I read it, but I wanted to.
And I think that's how it was intended.
Sure, sure. Yeah, maybe. I didn't, I'm not sure I saw it that way, but I can see that view.
That, that was my, that was my reading of it, but I just wanted to step by.
If no further discussion, I'm happy to take a motion from a board member. Member Brush?
I move that we recommend approval of the zone change of, uh, map lot R fourteen dash zero six C, urban resident one district and rural resident and agricultural district to a high density residential district. It's a nine, nine point one one acre parcel of land owner Harvey and Daniel Sprague.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I'll second it if not elsewhere. We have to have someone to vote on. Oh, you want, you want a second? All right. Member, Member Boucher.
Yeah, failed for lack of second.
Yeah, I, I was happy to vote to second it, but Member Boucher has sent. Okay, so any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands. I have two. Those opposed? I have five. Absolutely. And, and a reminder that this is, uh, ought not to pass because we voted no on approving Member Brush's motion.
Right.
And so, uh, Member Hune suggests that those that voted no say. Why? So I'm looking for comments at this point. Member Basna?
My vote was based upon ought not to pass due to spot zoning.
Member Brush?
Uh, my negative vote was based on a concurrence with the, uh, opinion that this is contrary to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Member Maher?
Uh, yes, I would first of all like to see the process of the comprehensive plan being implemented and hopefully that can happen in timely fashion. And I think the, the definition in that implementation process of what is meant by uh, either medium density or high density that need, needs to be established. Uh, and I, until that has happened, I'm somewhat of a loss as to, uh, how to decide whether this is or is not consistent with the comprehensive plan which has been adopted.
Thank you. Member Hune?
Yeah, this, this is the body that passed the comprehensive plan and sent it to City Council. And even though the land use development plan hasn't finished yet and there's a lot of definition yet to go into this, um, it's contrary to what we worked on for a year. Um, and, um, I just think it's too early to, uh, make a change like that. Maybe when everything else is ironed out, if there's another proposal, um, that might change things, but not at the present time.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I, I sort of stated my thoughts earlier, but I just, you know, I, I remember a member saying when I first started, when you're unsure, lean on the comprehensive plan. And so that was the basis for my decision. So we have a final, uh, vote. Uh, would the other members care to speak or? Please. Member Hayes?
I understand the residents and your feelings. I've been in that same situation. Where several, a couple of times in my lifetime, so I understand the emotions behind your coming here tonight. I, I do. But it seems to me that the process is that we either move this forward and then they come back with a plan. Um, so that's basically what I was going on is what's the practice and that's what I've witnessed for a short period of time that I've been.
Thank you. Member Boucher.
I also empathize with the, the concerns raised by all the neighbors who, um, who spoke this evening. I didn't feel like it met the definition of spot zoning. I did feel like there was enough, uh, high density out there and I don't think the Capehart neighborhoods, um, um, should be excluded from our thinking about what's out there today. And um, I did see, you know, argumentation for how there's other other zoning options that might be a better fit, but I didn't think that this was kept wildly out of, out of, um, I think this was a totally wrong one. I also had a lot of, had a lot of faith in the projects, the project process when they bring forward, you know, we zone it, but then they have to bring forward the project and we have another opportunity to determine if it's, um, in keeping with the neighborhood and in keeping with the spirit of, of the comprehensive plan and things of that nature. Uh, so that's why it was a tough decision. I think it was a tough decision for everybody. Maybe it was more obvious to others, but I, I found myself on, on the side of a yes in that, in this, in this vote. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have, uh, final result of recommendation of the city council ought not to pass. That's a five to two vote. Um, and so in a week, Director Creed? This will go to the city council for, for their thoughts on this issue, for them to override.
It requires a two-thirds vote of city council for them to override the planning board's recommendation.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate your help tonight, folks, and coming out. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, meeting minutes for September fifth. Please vote on this.
We don't have.
Oh, we don't have any. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Um, clarification, uh, two other, uh, things I would like to bring up with board members this evening. Um, one is, you know, I mentioned, uh, the hate speech thing a little bit earlier, um, and you know, there's been, in case, just to make you aware, in case you're not aware, uh, there's been a number of primarily council meetings, I think city council meetings. Um, and if you need to speak with Mr. Sprague, that's fine. Um, it happened last night in Portland. Um, it happened at our city council meeting a week ago, um, where somebody comes on Zoom typically and they, uh, a racist or hateful or just say absolutely outrageous things. Uh, I explored with the mayor of Portland last night, I was in T-its, so it was pretty tough. And there's been at least one media, I think it was a city of Southmore meeting where they just stopped. They, they stopped meeting and picked it up a different night. So there's been, you know, uh, some likelihood that that may happen here. So I just want you to be aware of it. Um, I've spoken with Solicitor Sevcek about it and you're welcome to say anything more if you want to. Uh, I've also spoken with our video and, uh, sound coordinator Cody and he's aware of it. If he hears anything, he, uh, assures me he's going to shut them off as soon as it happens. If you, um, were to perceive somebody doing that, let me know. Sometimes hearing isn't that good and I either don't know that they're doing it or I might not clearly hear what they're saying. But anyway, it's something, hopefully it will go away. But right now it's, it's a problem. Yeah, it may not. So, you know, I, I, that's why I made the comment I did about Zoom tonight, so.
Coordinated that one, it sounds like.
Yeah, and some of them are repeat callers, you know, some of them are taking fake names, some of them are taking fake addresses. Um, it makes me think we shouldn't even do Zoom, but that's not my decision. I assume that's the same manager's decision.
Tonight, we're having a few in those locales that are, that are, has difficulty.
Hang on, hang on. Just, I'm sorry. Hey, folks, we're still trying to have a meeting, so could you talk outside?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, we're interrupting your.
The council meeting was on Monday night.
Monday night, the city council meeting starts at seven thirty.
Seven thirty, here.
Could you thank the board for its attention?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So I did read today that those localities are municipalities are going to require, uh, if you want to be on Zoom for the meeting and participate, you have to talk or email the planning department and
Right.
they will assign you a, a login credential.
Yep.
And that way you'll be tracked via an IP address. So that's one way that those municipalities are dealing with this. They will know who they're dealing with at that time.
I'm so, right. I, I saw that too and have some way to go get that person because hate speech is illegal.
Yes.
And so, uh,
You are responsible for your IP address.
Yes. So anyway, I just wanted to make everyone aware, be up to speed on all that. The other issue I wanted to bring up this evening, uh, oh, you, you had a.
What about in the event that it's in, um, in the, yeah, in the live meeting in person, uh, because there have been somewhat insensitive, uh, and undecorous speech. Um, I, I can think of a couple instances where I would have liked to have spoken up, but it's, it's sort of a challenge in this public forum to, to correct someone. And once, are we, is there a process or a cutoff point where we, where we were able to put a hand up and ask to to object or something to that effect?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I, I sort of see it as, as my job, although I, I, you know, I, you know, encourage any help on this item. I don't think there's a perfect line. If you remember, uh, two weeks ago, Mr. McIntosh started talking about immigrants. And I felt that that was just a little bit out of line. Sometimes people will bring things up like that to make a point. And I think we should lean towards letting people speak openly because that's what we do. That's what we're here for. Is to, you know, discuss these issues, but listen to the public's opinion on things. And so I feel, you know, you saw me tonight try and get people to move along a little bit. I I hate to put a stopwatch on people. Because I want people to come up here and speak freely and speak in front of us freely, and I think that's part of our job to listen. So I don't want to cut them off too quickly. But yet, when things get a little bit ugly, and I thought was Mr. McIntosh, he was just over the line talking about. The immigrant situation, which is not something the planet has any effect on. So anyway, that's that's the type of thing that I I try and. Sort of get hold of and and stock.
I do, I do think we should be able to raise our hand if there if we find something offensive. And it it might not be offensive to you, and it may not. Based on the age of the person speaking. They might not find it offensive, but other citizens of the city would be kind of buying it.
Yeah, I I I I agree with everything I said. I I think we, my my feeling is we need to be. Somewhat cautious on that topic. I'll I'll just give an example. I've 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 opined several times. To the planning board, and I know people kind of think, there's Don Maher off here again, about. The social contract as it is embodied in the US Constitution. There are people, based on their political persuasion, that could find that offensive. And. I can't understand that, but I realize that 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 is. That's just part of their political belief system, and. My feeling is they're entitled to hold that position if they want to. So just, I guess, a word of caution maybe.
Yeah, I think those are all good points too. David, you want to speak at all on this?
Sure, I. It is the chair's duty to control the the meeting in terms of. Procedure and the amount of speech, and the chair can. Can cut people off, put time limits on, and I think Chair Perkins does a. A nice job in doing that and still letting people speak. The standard for whether someone can speak or not. Legally, technically, is not whether it offends someone. That's a different standard than the hate speech that.
That you were talking about. I will say this, at the city council meeting where there were four raised hands on Zoom. It certainly appeared to me that all four of those raised hands were. One person speaking, the same person speaking over and over. And it was interesting, the 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 check that that was mentioned about, you know, IP addresses and. Making sure that somebody. Is accountable when they're on Zoom, because that is. You know, it's it's, if a person is here, then you know who it is who's speaking like that, but if it's if it's a raised hand on Zoom, you don't necessarily know who that is. And clearly, I don't think that was four different people last, the last city council meeting. And so it is an interesting point to perhaps put some controls on the Zoom participation. When you have. Uh, a situation where somebody is. Trying to. Speak that doesn't have anything to do with anything that's before the council. Uh, and just trying to raise the issues that are more in the line of hate speech. I will say that it was cut off very quickly. And did not disrupt the city council meeting, at least here in Bangor. Um, everybody was on it and knew what was happening right away and. It it was, they were, the the. One or more people were cut off right away.
And if I can add to, I know at the state level, when you wanna, if you wanna watch a state committee on Zoom, you have to register in advance. You know, even if you're just observing and you're never gonna say anything, you still have to do just a two line registration of your name and. Your email. So something we can talk about at a staff level. We want to think about trying to do that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry?
Would that go to city council to implement and vote on?
I I would think it's up to them and the city manager to make that final decision, yeah. Yeah, I'll say one more thing and then we move on. I I do think. Councilor Palatier, I encourage you to watch the video of the the meeting. Last week's meeting because. To member Hayes' point, Councilor Palatier. Kind of spoke from her heart and said something about, you know, how she felt and how offended she was by what happened. And, you know, I think. We all have the freedom to do that, and I don't discourage anyone from speaking your opinion. That's what we're here for, as well as the public. I do really, there's a risk sometimes when these things get emotional. And the folks in the audience get a little bit combative, that if you. Hesitate, you know, or if you say how you feel, you can just get into a battle with somebody, and that's no fun. I don't think any of us really want to do that, and you folks are all, I think, pretty good about holding back. But anyway, I I, you know, I I certainly would not discourage you from saying how you feel about something. It, you know, that's what we're here for. With that being said, let's just move on because I did want to bring up one more point, and we've used up more time. I ever thought we would. This small agenda tonight, but I wanted to remind board members, because I think there are a couple of board members that are running out of term at the end of the year. One I spoke with earlier tonight is member Hune. And last year we had, and I think it's happened a couple other times, where somebody doesn't realize they're running out of term. Um, or they forget they're running out of term. Now is the time to reapply. If you are running out of term this year.
Supposed to notify you. I've never, I haven't been notified.
They do notify you, but I'm not sure. Were, so, number.
But my understanding is that you're you're, we're limited to two, three year terms.
Correct.
And I'm at the end of my second three year term, so I'm.
You've got one more year after this year, though, right? And then you're done, right, right?
I'm at the end of my second two, three year term. But I'm gonna verify that with Lisa before.
Yeah, and and it's good to verify it.
And I said, Lisa, how come I didn't get a application for another committee or something? She goes, because you've got another year.
Yeah, you got another year to go. So for you, newer members, maybe you're not aware, you're given two, three, you're allowed two, three year terms. But also what makes it confusing is I've actually got a chance to go like seven years, because the first year I came in and filled in for somebody. Who who died, somebody died, right? And so I, my, what I was doing in my first year was simply filling out his term. And that allowed me to then take another three years, another three years. So. Lisa's the one that knows those things. Lisa Goodwin, and you can find some of this information online on the. That's what Anne's looking at, but I think we have two members that are expiring. And and members, members. You 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 would also be ending as associate and and can come on as full time member. But you have to reapply. You have you have to reapply. It's not automatic, excuse me?
Right, it's not automatic.
Again, I I don't want to speak for Lisa Goodwin, but I'm pretty sure you're only a one year term.
Josh is twenty twenty five as associate.
Okay, so.
You'd have to apply to move up, Josh.
So he's he.
Right, if he applies.
Correct.
He has to apply for the seat.
So that's important to know.
Another alternative.
It's not. It's not. Yeah, that's what people do, and then they're no longer here.
Definitely.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why I bring it up. So with all that said. Does anybody else have anything they want to bring up tonight? If not, we're in a call or a meeting, so. Anybody else? All right, gang. Good night, everybody. Thank you.